Hello everyone, and thanks for joining us. The San Marcos Chamber of Commerce is proud to be hosting tonight's San Marcos City Council Candidate Forum. I'm the CEO of the Chamber, Rick Rongaitis, and I'll also be the moderator of tonight's forum. Thanks again for attending this virtual event, and we'll thank all the candidates for joining us as well. First, a little about the San Marcos Chamber. The San Marcos Chamber of Commerce is the voice of business in San Marcos. With over 50 years of serving the community, we continually evolve to help our members and help solve problems of all our members and their businesses, especially now. Our service to the community is based on three pillars. Advocacy for our Chamber members, promoting San Marcos through special events such as festivals, street fairs, our farmer's market every Tuesday from 3:00 to 7:00. Taste of San Marcos as well, and providing value and resources to our members through various networking events, webinars, as well as access at introductions, which is, which is critical for, for our businesses and our business leaders. Before I introduce the candidates, I'd like to explain the format of tonight's candidate forum. Chamber members and residents submitted questions to be asked of each candidate tonight. The Chamber's Board of Directors voted on the four questions that we will ask this evening. The candidates received these questions 72 hours in advance of the forum. No additional questions or follow-up questions will be asked this evening. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to each question. In addition, each candidate will have two minutes for an introduction and for closing remarks. City council seats are determined by districts. We have two districts that will be having elections on November 4th. District 3 includes the area around Cal State San Marcos, the Creek District, and Civic Center area, and extends east to Nordall, to the Nordall Marketplace, west to Rancho Santa Fe Road, and north to the 78 Freeway. District 4 includes Santa Fe Hills, Palomar College, and neighborhoods north of Gordon Road and Santa Fe Road to the west. Now I'd like to introduce each candidate as they make their opening remarks. From City Council, District 3, Mr. Jaurasi.
Thank you, Rick. Good evening, everyone. My name's Alan Jaurasi. And as Rick said, I am running for San Marcos City Council in District 3. You know, for way too long, City Hall has been run by real estate brokers and developers. And in my view, City Hall should be run by the community. My campaign is about delivering healthy, safe, affordable neighborhoods for all of San Marcos's families. I am the owner of Care Law Group here in San Marcos. I am a Chamber member, and I have dedicated my legal career to fighting for everyday people. While on the City Council, I will help struggling small businesses and working families survive this COVID economy. I will protect clean air and clean water and open spaces with an updated climate action plan. I will address the growing need for affordable housing, reduce the traffic on our streets, increase public safety while protecting our seniors. I'm a former deputy city attorney for the city of San Diego, and while I was there, I protected domestic violence victims, held scammers to be accountable, preserved open space in the city of San Diego, and fought for clean air and clean water. As a public interest attorney, I won a lawsuit against the county registrar because he wasn't properly accounting for our votes in the last election cycle. Most importantly, I will listen to your concerns and will ensure that City Hall addresses the needs of all the neighborhoods of San Marcos. I have been giving back to the San Marcos community for nearly two decades. I have raised my family. I now have two grandchildren in San Marcos. I volunteer for Meals on Wheels. I coach and am a board member for the San Marcos Youth Baseball. I'm active both on the San Marcos Rotary and the San Marcos Rock Toastmasters.
Thanks, Alan. Appreciate it. Now I'd like to introduce also running in City Council for City Council, District 3, Councilmember Sharon Jenkins.
Thank you, Rick. I'd like to share some information about myself. This is my seventh election in San Marcos. Nine, if you include the 1996 and the 2010 school bond efforts that I helped to coordinate. I've been on the council for eight years. I'm currently mayor pro tem. I served on the San Marcos Youth District School Board 14 years prior to serving on the council. I could be represent the city on North County Transit Board of Directors. I'm on, I'm vice chair of the Performance Administration and Finance Committee, as well as serving on the Executive Subcommittee. Prior to that, I served on NorthCom Fire Dispatch. And I've lived in 48 years. I'm a graduate of San Marcos High School, Palomar College, San Diego State, as well as Cal State's Leadership North County. I volunteered for over 20 organizations in the community over the past 30 years. I've done the board of 10 of those organizations, five of those 10 organizations. I am married with two daughters, two grandchildren, with the second one being one day old and still does not have a name. So we're anxiously awaiting that. I believe in paying it forward to improve the quality of life for our future generations. And I believe in respecting others who have different viewpoints and working together for the interest of all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Now I'd like to introduce from City Council, District 4, Mr. Neil Kramer.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Neil Kramer, and I'm a candidate for San Marcos City Council, District 4. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the Chamber for hosting this event this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to the people of San Marcos about the campaign and how we might move ahead moving forward. You know, my wife Cheryl and I and our son Andrew moved to San Marcos several years ago, probably the same reasons a lot of you folks might have moved to San Marcos. Our safe neighborhoods, our excellent schools, our beautiful parks and our trails. I work as a Legislative Affairs Manager for the San Diego Regional Center. We coordinate services for over 32,000 clients with developmental disabilities in their families. I volunteer at my church and in the community, but I also served on the city of San Marcos's Budget Review Committee for three years. So I have a strong handling and understanding in how the city's financing system works. As your council member, I really want to preserve what's best about San Marcos and move forward on needed improvements. One of my top priorities include limiting the development of these giant expensive homes at the expense of our open spaces and ridge lines. And I really feel when I'm talking to voters in the community that we're building too much and too fast. And that's why I'm endorsed by the Sierra Club, and I'm not taking any campaign contributions from these developers. We need to build more affordable housing in San Marcos so the people that work in our community can afford to live in our community. You know, when I lived in Michigan, I was chief of staff for Wayne County Commissioner, and we were on the Ways and Means Committee, and we oversaw a budget of over $2 billion. So I have wonderful experience with the inner workings of government on the county level and with the budget review in the city level. But I want to use this experience to manage your tax dollars effectively, you know, through this pandemic and preserve our city services. Another priority I have is to reduce traffic congestion on our local roadways through the collection of traffic data and smart city innovations to plan and reduce traffic. I really hope, I look forward to this discussion this evening and look forward to hearing everybody's viewpoint and having a productive evening. So thank you, folks, again for having me.
Thanks, Neil. Also running in District 4, Mr. Ed Musgrove.
Here we go. Having a little bit of issues with my network. Thank you again, Rick, for, for having us and hosting this and thanking the residents of San Marcos for tuning in. Just a little bit about myself. I'm a retired sheriff's captain, an Army veteran, and I spent my first assignment in patrol in the city of San Marcos. It was a while back, back in a time when the city of San Marcos, we had a crime problem. Working very closely though with our city government and with the Sheriff's Department to try and bring the city to the condition that we find it today, an extremely, an extremely enviable place to live. Just, I want to talk a little bit about my priorities on council, and they will be looking at what I call the three Ps. We have, we have traffic issues, of course, and some we can control, some we cannot. We, we have a great park system and trail system, and we also want to make sure our public safety is up to snuff. I'll get into some of those details a little bit later, but part of doing that is not discounting anyone. We, we have multiple partners. We have partners in our education system, within our local businesses, some of our larger chains. But also when we talk about building affordable housing, those, those homes are being built by developers. And we have zoning guidelines and restrictions. And what we need to do is ensure that when they come in to build, that they're building for the community so that we can continue to grow in a positive way to provide homes for our residents as they decide they need different accommodations. And of course, we want to make sure that those family members that want to stay in San Marcos are able to do that. I'm a proud graduate of Poway High School, also attended the Cal State University-San Marcos Leadership North County. I have a bachelor's degree in business management and a master's degree in organizational leadership. I look forward very much to serving as your representative on the San Marcos City Council. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Ed, and thanks to all candidates for joining us this evening. Now we're going to start the questioning. The first question. What do you see as the top three long-term goals for the city? First, I'm going to call on Sharon Jenkins.
Sorry about that. As council members, it's hard to pick the top three because we have to look at all the needs of the community every day, all the time. But in talking to people, I think the top three are the following. Number one is rebounding from COVID. Our budget has taken a $6 million hit this, this current fiscal year. We're fortunate that we have had healthy reserves. We used $2.5 million from our reserves to balance our budget. And we have to keep in mind that while our budget, the current budget is adopted, it doesn't mean that's where we're going to end up the year. So my goal is to hopefully end up the year without having to use any of our reserves. We have to remember that when COVID is over, it doesn't mean our budget worries are immediately over. We have, it's going to take us years to recover and get to a pre-COVID financial footing. And I believe my past leadership and experience of getting through many, many difficult times in the school district and the city will help us move forward. The second item is housing. We need to find the right product mix to meet the needs of our community within the remaining parcels we have left. We're about 75% build out. Our regional housing needs assessment number is about 3,100 homes, and we're to build those over the next eight years. And it's our goal to meet the needs of the community. There are many others, but I'd have to discuss traffic. And I would say in the last few years, we've diligently been working to get projects off the ground. We have the Creek Project Bridges going, Benton via Veracruz Bridges are starting. We'll have Twin Oaks Road connect to Craven near Discovery, and we're working with Caltrans to control the signal lights that are not in our control right now. So we're moving forward on making many projects happen quickly.
Thank you, Sharon. Next, I'll call on Alan Jaurasi with the same question. Alan?
Thank you, Rick. Headline, San Marcos is growing. You know, the health and safety of our community must be always our top priority. So whether it's COVID or the dangers of wildfires, we must be guided by science and sound public policy. My three priorities would be, one, stabilize COVID-19 and implement the economic recovery plan. Yes, the budget has taken a hit, and yes, it will take a few years to recover from that economic disaster. Two, let's declare a regional climate emergency. I'm sure you guys, I'm sure you folks have been outside today. It's, it was triple digits. There are fires raging all around our state. Firefighters are losing their lives in the line, line of duty, and San Marcos families are concerned about when we're going to get hit with wildfires again. We've got to take an aggressive approach on our climate action plan, which includes clean transportation, affordable and sustainable housing solutions, and climate adaptation and emergency preparation. For a detailed look at my climate action plan, you can look at my website at alanjaurasi.com. And then three, let's pass the general plan update, which is due by April 25th. The general plan covers our housing and transportation needs, and we can do this by effectively looking at the housing needs for this, for the city of San Marcos. We have overbuilt on upper and moderate homes and underbuilt on affordable homes. So we'll consider market constraints and zoning environmental issues, but we must get this general plan update established before April 25th.
Thanks, Alan. Now I'll call on Ed Musgrove. Ed, your top three long-term goals for the city?
Thank you, Rick. And when I, when we talk about long-term goals, realize COVID is a pretty significant issue today. It really is my hope that it's not going to be a long-term issue. We'll, we'll come through this, we'll be better for it, we'll develop better strategies on how to deal with unanticipated events where we simply don't have a background on, on how to address them. But one of the things I like to talk about is, of course, our economic development. We have projects that are in the works right now, both infrastructure that are contracted out by the city, but also projects that are bringing much-needed development to our region in the, in the form of affordable housing and different, different mark for those coming system, either, either new families or in the case of daughters where they would be moving out and exploring rental or buying opportunities. We need to make sure that we're able to keep those people in San Marcos. We have a very vibrant economic development department. They work with our local businesses to take advantage of grants and tax breaks. They help local businesses to increase their opportunities with either new properties or moving into properties that become available to keep them in San Marcos. And all of this has a great net effect for the city of San Marcos as it helps to increase our sales tax base with those businesses remaining in town. Our current budget proposes sales tax revenues this year for 2021 of 23% for our operating budget. That's important to have, so we need to look at that as a long-term strategy. Secondly, our, I would echo also our climate action plan. I went to the, the briefings that were put on, and I listened very closely to some of the opportunities that we have. Also the metrics that are used to determine how we are affecting our, our climate. And I would argue that some of those are in an idealistic format. We need to be realistic. We look at the governor recently saying that in, was it 10, 20 years, we're going to get rid of gasoline-powered cars. Well, that, that's an ideal. It's probably not realistic. We certainly need to work towards certain goals, but implementing the climate action plan in the format that we have is something that I think is doable. We can get it done. It is 42% below our 2012 levels, and that's for a 2030 target, and we have another target area in 2050. And I'm excited to look at the, the final proposal on the Planning Commission next month, and it will come before City Council, hopefully at the end of the year. And lastly, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Neil Kramer, it's your turn to answer the question.
Well, San Marcos is doing a lot of things right, you know, and I want to keep things that way in the many things that we are doing right. Our budget has been sound, and we have taken a hit on COVID. But when I'm talking to folks in the district and throughout the city, the big issue right now, as I said before, is the development. A lot of the projects that have been improved are over 2,000 square foot homes, 700, 800, 900,000 on up. They're being built on our ridge lines, our open spaces, you know, and it's overcrowding our schools. It's congesting our traffic. And if you look at the tax revenue from the long term that we've received from these developments, it doesn't pay enough for the maintenance costs in the future. So we've actually exceeded our development in, in the above moderate category under the regional housing needs assessment. I think we more than doubled it in the last 10 years. So if you look at the numbers, the new assessment for the next 10 years is probably another 1,300 homes. We already met the need for 20 years, just in the last 10 years. Where we're not hitting the mark is the moderate or above low and low, and we haven't hit 20% of those numbers. So what I'm proposing, we need, we can build smarter, we can build better, denser, closer to transit, walkable to parks, walkable to schools. We just need to have a new vision. It's going to lower our greenhouse gas imprint. Traffic congestion is another issue, and we need to commission a traffic study, collection of traffic data, and smart city innovations to plan on the short term. But also we need a regional plan to address the long-term needs of our community. And finally, again, it's the budget, the budget. I'm going to use my budget experience to preserve and protect our city services and use our tax dollars smartly to ensure that our services are protected and sharpen our pencils to make sure we can move forward to maintain what we have. And we may have to tighten our belts, but I think we're going to come out of this together. But folks, we are in this together, and that's why I'm running because I want to give back to my community. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Now we're on to our second question. Second question this evening for the candidates is, what is the recovery plan for San Marcos from COVID-19? And we'll start with Alan Jaurasi.
Thanks, Rick. We've touched upon this, but so long as we keep guiding ourselves by science and take individual responsibility to slow down the spread of the virus by wearing a mask, distancing ourselves in public, practicing vigilant hygiene, we can control the numbers. And as you can probably detect from my other answers, I always start with the facts, the numbers. Over the past seven days, our county has averaged 8,000 tests per day, reporting 290 new cases with one death reported. The county's positivity rate is 3.5%, which is an improvement. It makes us actually eligible to be elevated to next tier, tier three, by next Tuesday if we stay on track. We already see, seeing our parks open and our, our open spaces reopening, and we're discussing opening our schools. So focus on the case rate and the positivity, positivity percentages, and those are the key metrics to follow as we get off of this COVID path. I also applaud the city's allocation of the 2.9 million in loans that were converted in part to grants. It was welcomed relief to the thousands of small businesses, many of whom I represent. So they were feeling the strain of the downward economy, and I can tell you, I personally helped over a dozen small businesses obtain PPP loans last April. So I, I know how much those monies are appreciated in this terrible time. But much, much more financial help is going to be needed as we come out of this virus and start rebuilding our economy when we reopen schools and reopen our, all our businesses. These are all uncharted territories, and we must remain vigilant. We must stay with our eyes open and always look at the numbers. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Alan. Sharon Jenkins, same question?
Thanks, Rick. I think our number one part of our recovery plan is trying to keep our residents as safe as possible, following the rules that are given to us by the county, by the governor. That's number one. We, as was mentioned, we have a very successful business sustainability program. We, the council authorized $3 million of our reserves to be available for businesses to help them get their loans quickly. And we had 122 businesses receive $2.9 million. Of that, 1.8 million has been converted to grants. So it's no, 1.8 million dollars of that amount is no longer owed by the businesses. We used some of our CARES Act funding to help them about, so about half of the businesses no longer have to pay back the loan. And our goal is to help them keep their business going. We also have created a rental assistance program and set aside $400,000 for renters who need monthly assistance with their, with their rental payments. The, that program will be administered and managed by the Interface Services and North County Health Services. And finally, the city is trying to do their part. As many people know, we have a very unique position in that we owe about 10% of our revenue comes from our leases. And we are working with about 30% of our tenants are asking for some sort of assistance. And so we're deferring payments as much as possible and trying to work with them so they can keep their businesses going as well as defer their loan payments and, and release payments and pay later. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Now I'm going to call on Neil Kramer, same question for you, Neil.
Sir, you know, the city of San Marcos has done a fabulous job. You know, technically, we're still in a state of emergency because of this COVID pandemic. But Jack, we have a wonderful city manager and Jack Griffin and the staff. And we were the first to implement this loan program that Sharon talked about, you know, and we, 2.9 million in loans to 122 small businesses is phenomenal. You know, they also fast-tracked an online way, an online portal so businesses can apply for licensing online instead of coming in person. I mean, the, the staff, the city's been amazing in innovative ways to improve processes and make things work better under this pandemic. 12% is of our budget is rental income from our leases. And as Sharon mentioned as well, those folks need assistance. So I know Jack and the city folks are working to address any shortfalls, to forgive some or, or work with them. The goal is to keep them in these properties so we're getting something instead of having them move out. We need to really support them and continue to help them. COVID is going to, we don't know how long this is going to last. I mean, recovery is going to be long. So I mean, we got to monitor our budget, preserve our city services. But we also need to protect and help our small businesses as needed. You know, we really should be advocating through our federal, federal government to get more assistance. I know a stimulus package is being discussed right now again, but if we can get more money in the hands of our businesses to help them stay afloat, that's going to be amazing. Now, rather than reopening plan between the state and the county and how this works, you know, it needs to be a balanced approach. You know, it's, I call it the three Es. You need to look at the epidemiology, case spread, hospital capacity, the economics, which is how are we going to support our small businesses and protect them, you know, reopen safely? But also education for our kids in schools and educating the community. I mean, not ones, we got to look at an equal balance for each of these levels to come up with a good plan to reopen safely to protect the public. So thank you so much, Rick.
Thanks, Neil. Ed, your turn.
Thank, thank you, Rick. I appreciate that very much. I would, I would echo the, you know, the, the kudos to the city for making available the, the $3 million and, and the local businesses that took advantage of it and then converting the CARES money from the federal government to cover those loans into grants, and it's fantastic. We need to do everything we can to keep our small businesses going. The PPP is fantastic for the employees. I would also say that the city has the public's health and safety as a priority. But health and safety goes a little bit beyond just what we're looking at as far as the impacts of COVID. Science will drive the, the resolution for that. There's also an economic factor, economic health of this city. We, we cannot let our city simply devolve as a result of this. We have a, a system in place that Sacramento continues to go back and forth with what is and is not permissible. I know that I can go grocery shopping anytime by putting on a mask and keeping distance, and that seems to be fine. And they, they've, they've identified that as a necessary function. But I think for the businesses that are in town, all of them consider their business as necessary to maintain their livelihood and keep their employees moving. But the city has done a great job with, working with the Chamber on Discover Our Recovery Business Safety Promise for those businesses that agree to abide by the for those businesses that agree to abide by the safety guidelines that have been put down by the state, adopted by the county, and then supported by the city to, if they follow those guidelines, they're specially marked so that the customers that come in there know that they're going to have as clean an environment as we can possibly maintain at this point. We've partnered with SDG&E to ensure that utilities will not be cut off. And the city has a moratorium right now to ensure that either residential and commercial properties will not lose their status because of their inability to cover their rent. And I know a lot of the businesses that I frequent, they're running right now on about 25 to 30% of their normal revenue. The city did a great job by very quickly allowing for a lot of our businesses that are able to, to move outside. So a lot of those are dining facilities, some operations, the barber shop that I frequent, they had that opportunity, and it's fantastic. And then partnering with our local, uh, regional governments along with through Innovate 78, along the 78 corridor, to provide a quick, easy access for all the residents in North County, a one-stop shop to find out what's going on in the region, the status of the lockdowns, what's permissible, and how they can reach out to the local government to find answers. Thank you, Rick.
Now it's time for our third question of this evening. So I'll ask all the candidates, with all of the new environmental requirement changes from the state of California and with the delay in updating the general plan, how do you plan on meeting the housing needs of our community without losing local control to the state? Sharon Jenkins, I'm calling on you first.
Okay, thank you. Whoops. Thank you, Rick. So we decided recently as a council that we're not letting, going to let COVID slow us down, that we want to continue to move forward. We're working on our plans. We are currently working on our housing element, and it will be finalized in the spring of 2021. We paused our general plan update because we want to see what's going to happen with housing, commercial and industrial needs. How is COVID going to impact them? And so we thought it wise to wait and see how, how we kind of come out of that and see what changes might happen. Local control is very important to us in San Marcos. We continue to monitor what's happening, happening with the state legislative people, and we weigh in when needed. We are in the process of updating our climate action plan. We are on target for that, and we want to have a meaningful plan. We just don't want to have a plan that's going to be put on the shelf. Said, say we passed a plan, we have a plan, we want it to have, be possible to implement it. The plan right now is going to cost approximately $4 million, approximately. It's not a plan yet. It needs to go to the planning commission, and then it needs to come to the council. So we, so we, there's a financial hit to that, and we have to make, figure out how to come up with the $4 million and, and make that happen. We continue to move forward with the state to make sure we have efforts underway and continue to go down the path that we want to do what's best for the residents of San Marcos, and that's our, has always been our goal.
Thanks, Sharon. Alan, your turn to answer the question.
Thanks, Rick. So housing, object. First, let's start with the numbers. Our population is now hovering around 100,000 in the city. The fastest growing segment of the city, believe it or not, is the 55 to 74 age bracket. Median incomes are rising. About half the homes are single-family homes, and they're owned by 61% of the population, while the other 39% occupy the multifamily apartments in the senior parks. The price of a new home is basically out of reach for most people in the city of San Marcos. And rent, the app, the median rents in San Marcos are $1,750. In my bankruptcy practice, I often have to do what's called a means test to discern people's budget in conjunction with statistical averages. And it's unnerving here in San Marcos to know that 33% of owners and 50% of renters are now cost burdened. We are allocated to build 3,116 new housing units over the next eight years. We, as Neil had mentioned, we've overbuilt housing in the high-end, high-end bar buyers, and we've missed the targets for affordable housing. I think if we approve multiplex and mid-rise, mid-mixed-use projects that are close to the public services and have multimodal transportation options, that's the future that I will endorse. I will also work with the city engineer to find traffic calming solutions in our city right now. And I think that will be a good start for our city. Ultimately, we need to decide what kind of city we want San Marcos to be. Do we want it to grow as a bedroom community where people commute out? Or do we want people to live in our city, work in our city, and enjoy the recreations of our city?
Thanks, Alan. Ed Musgrove, your turn to answer the question.
Yeah, thanks very much. You know, this is a, a fairly simple question, but an extremely complex answer. And COVID-19 has not helped. It's complicated the development of our general plan. And for those that don't know, the general plan is our blueprint, and it's put together by a group of representatives from all over the community, residents at large, members of the building community, education, chamber of commerce, real estate, the hospitals. We have members of city staff that kind of shepherd to ensure we're not, we're not running afoul of laws and restrictions. But by and large, it's a blueprint, and it's the blueprint that the developers use to build homes. And the city of San Marcos does not build homes. It requires a developer to come in. And we can say a lot about development. We can talk about ridge lines. We have an ordinance that was passed in 2008 by 68% of the residents of San Marcos against building homes on ridge lines. So when you see homes on the ridge lines, they're grandfathered in. We're not building homes there anymore, and we haven't. But when we talk about affordable housing, we have to look at the, the, the reality is to build a $500,000 home, it could cost up to $200,000 in entitlements, holdings, fees, and interest, where you really have a $300,000 home. So I think the best way to approach this is to have Sacramento streamline the process for building. We, we encumber way too much time and finances with projects that we could have built affordable housing. So when you talk about why don't we have more affordable housing in San Marcos? Because the people that work in those industries, the trades industries, the carpenters, the electricians that depend on projects like that for their livelihood, their project developers can't afford to build because it, it's too expensive. They won't, they won't make any money, and then they're in a business to make money. That's how they, they support their employees and their subcontractors. So we really need to work on that a little bit more. The city has a good general plan. When it was passed in 2012, I think it was passed with a vision of this will work for a while. But so much has changed in the last eight years. The, the general plan, when we get a new one in place, it's going to have to suppose that there will be changes moving forward with technology and, and needs, and it's just the way things are going. And I would just, real quickly, Rick, we talked about the mandates for RENA. There's a recent report that came out last week by the Embarcadero Project that suggests very strongly that those RENA numbers have been calculated incorrectly insofar as the, the regional needs. And I'd like to see a little bit more investigation on that to see if that 3,000 number that Sharon talked about is a realistic estimate for our area. Thanks.
Thanks, Ed. Neil, your turn.
Well, thanks, Ed. No, that's a good point, Ed. I was going to talk about that as well with the RENA numbers and the article in the Union Tribune about the, possibly being skewed in the formula. We do need to look at that. I do agree with that, because I think the numbers that were allocated to San Diego are way too high, and we need to, we need a new assessment done. I agree with that. You know, again, and it's, the development is the big thing. So the state, okay, the city doesn't build houses. Developers come with projects, city approves them. State of California mandates X a number of homes per county, and we just talked about that. We talked about the regional housing needs assessment numbers and how we've been developing. Well, you know, the numbers don't lie. I mean, we've exceeded the category of the above moderate. I mean, probably over the last 10 years, and we've now, by exceeding in the last 10 years, we've met the next 10 years. So we need to develop more affordable and better, closer to traffic, closer to transit, walkable neighborhoods. And I do agree with that, that vision and philosophy. But I really think, you know, a lot of folks are saying, well, if we don't, if we don't approve these projects, the governor, government's going to come down and make us do it. Well, what, make us build houses? We don't build houses. And I don't see any instance where the government, the state came down and made any city do anything. I mean, we need to incentivize developers to build the projects that we need, then that's going to be best for the city. And we also need to make sure that any development that's being made, it has the proper infrastructure in place to meet, you know, our traffic, safety for fire, and additional money for our schools to avert overcrowding. I mean, if we keep developing the way we're planning behind Santa Fe Hills and around Twin Oaks and that whole area, Deer Springs and Twin Oaks Valley are going to turn into the next 76, just like in Oceanside. And it's going to be a headache for our community, and I'm not going to agree to that. So thank you.
Thanks, Neil. Now it's time for our fourth and final question of the candidates. In today's society, there is a lot more of us versus them instead of how can we get it done together? What is your philosophy? Provide an example of getting things done. Alan, we'll call on you first.
Oh, thanks, Rick. You know, I've worked with people my entire career. Back when I was in college, I was a Big Brother volunteer. I worked with disadvantaged teens at that time, just to make sure they had a shot. When I was in law school, I was the head notes and comments editor. I got to work with the faculty and student writers to produce useful law journals. As a deputy city attorney, I was promoted to be the head trial and appellate deputy in charge of supervising 35 prosecutors, paralegals, and investigators. As a public interest attorney, I fought to make sure that the voters of San Diego were, were guaranteed that their votes would be counted by the registrar by post-election accounting. So all my career, I have fought to make sure that, that justice is served and that people can work together to accomplish a common goal. I have these lifelong experiences that have basically produced these just outcomes. Ultimately, governing is the same endeavor. The most important skill I have learned, Rick, is to be an active listener and communicator. Active listening requires the skill set of empathy, understanding, and problem solving. And I will bring these skills to City Hall. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Alan. Sharon, your turn to answer the question.
Thanks, Rick. So it was interesting that you talk, the question was about us versus them because in my mind, there is no us versus them. It's only all of us working together. I think people that have worked with me over the past 22 years, serving the people, or 30 years being a volunteer, say that, would say that I'm a champion of communications, and I work with others to bring consensus when needed. I believe working together is essential for the betterment of our community. Some examples of what I've done is help create the San Marcos Unified School District and the city joint task force. I worked with, I asked the rest of the council to create a climate action plan working group of residents that's going to work along staff to implement our plan once it's in place. I, several years ago, worked with one of the school board members to find a way to bring a third school resource officer to the, to the school district. So I think, I think there's numerous ways that I've shown that I work together. And another thing we do as a city, we work together with affordable housing developers. There's workforce housing, and then there's truly, truly affordable housing. Sometimes affordable housing developers have trouble getting their financing in order. And so we work with them, and we provide them their last dollar in and loan them the money to, to help make the project work. So we have lots of ways where we, where we work together for the betterment of the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Now I'm going to call on Neil. Neil, it's your turn to answer the question.
Well, thanks, Rick. You know, my bachelor's is in human services and management, and my master's is in marriage and family and child therapy. So I learned a lot of communication skills, and then my work in social services is very important. And part of my job at the regional center and outside the legislative stuff is the fair hearing stuff where there are disputes about services, and I sit on a lot of mediations. And, you know, when I lived in Michigan, I had probably the best congressman ever, and his name was John Dingle. And John Dingle's mantra was, you know, compromise is not a bad word, right? You know, we're in this together. So in my field, the regional center, I want to do what's best for our client, but we have the law, you know. But, you know, I mediate a lot more times than we go to hearing. But, you know, it's about not talking over each other, but talking to each other and listening. And as Alan said, active listening, you know. And an example of working together, you know, with our, there are 21 regional centers across the state, it's over 300,000 clients, and gosh, COVID hit, and the governor's May revised budget was going to add some significant hits to our services this year. But we all mobilized. We mobilized with our, with our service providers, disability rights and other communities. And we started meeting with our local legislators on both sides of the aisle. These aren't partisan issues, these are people issues. And we were able to preserve our service funding for this year. So it's about coming together and listening, and we did it. And I've been successful doing that for a long time. And I really, as a city council person, we're in it together, folks. I mean, we're here to help our city, our citizens of our city. We want to help our citizens and move forward. You know, I just, I promise to be a good listener, to listen to our voters, but, and try to make sound decisions. It's going to benefit all of us.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Ed Musgrove?
Sure, thanks, Rick. You know, I, I've always said that it doesn't really matter so much that I think an issue is important. If somebody brings it up, then it's important to them. But what we really need to get to is the why is it important to them? And that will generally get you down to your, to their root cause. And with that, you can usually find a fairly easy solution, and I love doing that. I love working with people, getting a feel for them, finding out what concerns them. What, what is it that is their chief issue, and then why? And the why is really the, the key. And so I'll, I'll look to a story in an organization where I work, and I won't be specific to protect some people that may be listening in. And working with one of my lower-level supervisors, we knew we had to do a radical modification of our business model to ensure we were maximizing the, the assets that we had to keep our community safe. So what we did was we came up with a plan, and the suggestion was, let's just implement it. But instead, what we did is we reached out to lower-level supervisors and line staff. And instead of telling them what we wanted, we told them what, what it is we wanted to get as an end result and let them develop a plan. And it took the better part of a day and a half before they came up with the exact same plan that we did. And we implemented that plan. It required some adjustments to scheduling. We had people volunteering to work these shifts, and ultimately what it resulted in is, I'll give up where, where I was working. In that particular year, when every sheriff's jurisdiction saw a rise in crime, ours was the only one that saw a reduction in crime, because we realized it did take a team effort. You can force the issue down, but if you get buy-in and investment from the practitioners, you're going to have success. And that's why you listen to people, find out what they like and why, and then work with that and use that as a positive, bring them in, and we'll all work together as a team. Thanks, Rick.
Thanks, Ed. That concludes the question portion of our candidate forum. And before we get to closing remarks, I just want to thank all the chamber members and all the residents of San Marcos that submitted questions, and also thank the board of directors who selected the, the questions to be asked this evening. Now we're going to go to closing remarks. Each candidate has two minutes, and we are going to start with Sharon Jenkins.
Thank you, Rick. So I have people ask me, why would I continue, want to continue this role with everything going on, with all the challenges and, and all the upheaval? And, and I'm sorry, I've thought about that. And I, what I say is, this is the community I've helped grow. I've helped the school district. We've built schools. We've made some tough decisions. I came on in 2012 when we were in another economic crisis. We got ourselves out of that. I want to help bring us back to where we were before COVID. And I believe that my experience will help do that. I believe the best way I can serve my community is like I have in my past six elections, and that is to be a council member for all residents. I believe in nonpartisan politics, or nonpartisan non-politics. To me, it doesn't matter what district you live in, which side of the 78 you're on, or which political party you prefer. My commitment is I listen to all residents, and I make informed decision, and my focus is on only San Marcos. I would suggest if people want to learn more about me, to go to my website. I have over 180 local endorsers from all over the political parties. I'm extremely proud to be endorsed by our local firefighters and our deputy sheriffs associations. And you have my promise that I will continue to stay locally focused and do what I think is in the best interest of all residents. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Alan Geraci, calling you for your closing remarks.
Well, thank you, Rick, and I just want to take this moment to thank you and your staff, Melanie, Christina, and Barbara, for doing a magnificent job in organizing this, bringing us together, and having an opportunity to be heard amongst all of the chamber members, of which I am one. You know, voting is our most cherished right, and this election period is going to be an extremely interesting voting period. As I mentioned, I'm very familiar with the registrar's process. I've litigated against the registrar, and I've helped make good corrections in our local registrar so that all our votes will be counted. And everybody should be aware that whether you're going to be voting by mail or at the poll, you're dropping off your mail ballot at one of the two convenient sites, at the San Marcos Library or the County Assessor's Office, your vote will be processed and counted. Rest assured of that. So as I, as I sum up and conclude, I want to just say that my focus in running for this particular office is to bring these problem-solving ideas, these fresh ideas, to City Hall. I'm focused on climate because I see climate as an emergency that we need to tackle with more of, more than a kick the bucket down the road approach that this present proposed plan does. So I've proposed a much more bold and aggressive plan that I hope everybody will have an opportunity to look at and comment about on my website at alangeraci.com. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Alan. Now I'm going to call on Ed Musgrove, sorry, for your closing remarks.
That's okay, Rick. I do it sometimes, too. You know, I've had a lifetime experience in leadership in the military and law enforcement. I've managed multi-million-dollar homeland security grants. I've run over 100 influence agencies in 3,000 range. Indian Gaming, reservation, I've run the Personnel Department for a 4,000 employee organization. I know what it means to be a leader. I know what it means to be a good manager. I know what it means to work within a team. And that's what you need on the city council. Too many of our regional governments are becoming a little more divisive, and it doesn't need to happen. Represent everyone in the city. You listen to your constituents in your district, but you come to the council as a member of a team, working together towards a positive goal. And I would just like to offer up that we use, we use our parks as a, as a kind of a, I guess, best way to put it, as a way to sell our community. We have a fantastic park system in this city. Those are paid by developers. They're paid by our property taxes, our sales taxes. We get a lot of money that comes in to keep our parking fantastic. Roads, our structure, they need constant maintenance. I want to be part of that. I've managed multi-million-dollar budgets. I know how to do that. That's not, it's not rocket. It's just hard work. It depends on us getting in there and getting it done. Public safety, it's kind of second nature to me, but what it's done is it's taught me how to build relationships across multi-disciplines and getting to know those different demands from different organizations, what it means to take care of our citizens, to keep us a safe environment and a place where we all want to live, and I'm looking forward to doing that. You could find me at musgrove number four citycouncil.com. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your vote. Thank you, Rick.
Thanks, Ed. Neil Kramer, your turn.
Well, good evening, Rick, and thanks again for hosting this tonight. I'm really honored to be here, and I've talked to everybody and all the candidates. And a lot of things we do agree on, and there are some differences, but, you know, that's part of the process. You know, I'm running for city council because, as I said earlier, I really want to preserve and protect what we love about our community and move forward on needed improvements. But I'm strongly committed to preserving our hillsides, our parks, our trails, and open spaces. You know, we need to curb the big development and build smarter, not bigger, and build where folks can afford to live, and the folks that work in San Marcos can afford to live in San Marcos. And I know that's why I've been endorsed by the Sierra Club. You know, we need to implement some traffic studies, as I said earlier, to reduce our traffic congestion in our area and look at our short-term needs, but also regional long-term needs, which I would like to work on and address. But I have the experience, I think, to be an effective council member. I have legislative experience through my dealings with state legislators and monitoring legislation through my work at the Regional Center. I've worked as a chief of staff to a county commissioner and oversaw a $2 billion budget for Wayne County. I served three years on the city's Budget Review Committee. You know, but don't take my word for it, folks. The majority of the current city council has publicly endorsed me in my campaign, and I'm very proud of that. I really am proud of that. And one thing I can promise is I'm going to seek community input, work hard, and make sound decisions on behalf of all of our residents. I hope you'll take a moment to learn more about me and my campaign and visit my website at neocramer, thenumberfourcitycouncil.com. Again, my name's Neil Kramer, running for San Marcos City Council. I just hope I can earn your support and perhaps your vote this November. And thank you for this opportunity to talk tonight, and have a good evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Neil. That concludes our city council candidate forum for this evening. I want to thank all the candidates for coming today and participating. It's a great honor for me in the chamber to be able to host an event like this. And I think everyone would agree that it's very refreshing to be able to have this dialogue in a very civil way, and it's a great way to, for you all to get your message out to the residents of San Marcos. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate all the attendees that have been on the Zoom webinar and also on Facebook Live. One reminder is that we are going to be doing the same type of format and candidate forum for the San Marcos Unified School District Governing Board, which will be, there's three areas where there will be an election. And that is on October 7th, also at 5:00. All that information is on our website, samarcoschamber.com, where you can register and listen to that. And also, this video will be on our website in coming days. So if you want to see it again, or if you got, if you came on on board after it first started, please do that as well. So thanks again for everyone, and have a great evening.